Good evening, trying to crank it up. Today is July 28th, regular board meeting at the time of 6:07 PM. Due to COVID, social distancing recommendation and consideration of the health of the village of Dixmore residents and based upon Executive Board's order issued by Governor JP Prissa of the State of Illinois, our meeting will be held both physical and virtual component to promote the fullest public participation. The link is below on the agenda. Please note that public comment will be allowed at the meeting. The public will be invited to make any comments as provided for the agenda. Until public comment, all persons who are not members of the board trustees should mute themselves so as to allow the board trustees to conduct the business of the village. If anybody wishes to electronic public comment, should email me, clerkDarden@clerk@thevillageofdixmore.org. No letting go one hour before the start of the meeting. We have nobody sent any emails in here. Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Tyson? Trustee McFadden?
Here.
Trustee Muse?
Present.
Trustee Smith? And Trustee Webster?
Here.
Also present is Mr. John Thompson, Mr. Toy Mews, Mayor Roberts, Clerk Darden, Lee Long, Chief of Police by Zoom. Fire Liaison? Fire Liaison, Pete McCann?
Robert.
Corrige Councilman Selly and Tony Mitchell arrived at 6:08 PM. Next on the agenda?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence by Mayor Roberts. Quotation prayer.
Lord Jesus, I once more come to say thank you, thank you for being here, John. Thank you for bringing us through this water crisis once again. I should continue to keep us strong, Lord Jesus, continue to keep us healthy. Let us continue to move in right direction due to regulations for this village and the residents of the village. And just continue to show us the right way to go, keep us safe and everyone else, in Jesus' name.
Any other departmental commentary? Chief Lee Long?
Yes, go ahead clerk.
Do you have a report?
Yes, I got a few things. I just want to make the, good afternoon, Mr. President and Board and a whole lot of residents. I'd like to say, I got a couple of things that just want to appeal you guys in on. One of the things is just to let you guys know that we got some very important training that we was required to have. School is starting back up, we got the active shooting training so that, you know, if we have any issues over there at the school, we're certified so that we can take that off our plate or our worry list anyway. We have the proper people certified after this afternoon around 4 o'clock. Also, we have the proper people certified for homicide investigation now. Well, tomorrow will be the last day, but we will have a guy that has been homicide experienced. I was in a meeting today with all the chiefs and all the state's attorneys and they're very pleased with how an investigator has been conducting himself and he's been following everything to their instructions to the T in reference to that case that we have been investigating with Shannon Perkins. Calcom is moving forward, you know, and we're kind of working out all the kinks with the help of Fred Wilks and everything else is working according to the plan.
Is that the end of your report?
I couldn't hear you.
Is that the end of your report?
End of my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Toy Mews?
I don't have anything right now. I was reporting that we haven't done building permits properly and I'll report next time on how many big, um, tornadoes affect.
Mr. Johnson? Pete McCann?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, good evening. Everybody, Mayor Roberts and the Board, the village of Posen responded to 13 fire-related incidents in the village of Dixmore for the month of June. Monday, we also, at 2:30 in the morning, we had a house fire in 1463 Port Hoover. Luckily, no one was injured and Posen Fire Department along myself and a few of our neighbors, surrounding communities came out and were able to keep the fire mitigated. But without any other questions, that would be my important time.
Mr. John Thompson?
Good evening, Trustee Mayor and Trustees, Department Heads. Six topics, we'll be very shortly discussing. CMAP, which I sent out to every trustee, they're going to help us with re-planning and developing the community. It's a grant, but they don't give us economic funding, they give us the consultants and the private professional contractors and engineers to help us plan this community out. That would go along with, we were looking at zoning information and checking our code book and it's, most of the information was left out of our code book, which you guys have signed up on. So I'm proposing to ask CMAP to review our code books to see if they can help us plan and upgrade our code books. The codes that were left out have them available, so any trustee that's interested, if you could come and take a look at it and we can understand why we have to get planning zoning board started as soon as possible and get these codes upgraded to 20th century. That's the trucking company that I sent out to all of the departments, they're interested in. They wanted to know the zoning for 14121 Street. The zoning is restricted generally, so they can use that location to do trucking, but if there's a situation where we do not want trucking repair on Wood Street or things of that nature, we can do that when they become, when they apply for a business license and send us a proposal of what they intend to do with that location. But we can't, I don't see any reason that we should restrict them purchasing property and putting it back on tax records. As long as it's not a falsehood like, we're gonna do truck parking and then turn around and do trucking pictures, we don't need that. So...
Well, I was saying, it should've been, no disrespect to you, but it should've been talked about at committee meeting. People that show up at committee meetings, this is not a meeting to talk about.
Well, it's an ongoing process and it's been months now, I'm trying to get some things resolved. The other land situation for Mr. Gibbons, we should then have a meeting. I'm just bringing that up because he's interested and I'm just saying if we're interested that we should be able to, we should turn in a proposal.
Do we own it?
Yes. But we have to go back and we'll have to reclaim the deed. But we should get a proposal from him so that we can review it and see if this is something that we would be interested in. And if it's okay with the trustees and the mayor, I tell them before we're turning in a proposal. That's, we simply don't have to do that. Army Corps of Engineers, we sent in the information to the engineers to turn that into the Army Corps so that we could get started with the 143rd Street Water Improvement, Street Improvement. That's the $2 million grant. Wood Street Project, I've got a notification from the engineers from IDOT, they're starting the project, they're doing their due diligence and they called to make sure that they can contact the proper utility companies and I helped them getting those utility companies with Anita Barker, who was our representative, and she could also introduce the gas representative, nitro gas representative, that was from our area. That's it. So if there's any questions on the code book, please come and see me because that has to be upgraded and I think it's more important that we can even believe because we don't have, the code book is not deflected legal, proper legal jargon and legislation to protect the village. It was implicated with the old code book and half of the code is left out. So that's just something I would like to think about and we can go on that in a later date. If there's any questions, I'm available. If not, that's the end of my report.
One question, we do have a plan to zonify, don't you have to set a date for that?
We need to set a date and to, at least the initiation start because we need to do a new zoning map and we also need to do a new TIF map and we also need to do...
Say, when would you like us to set up?
Where or when?
When, when?
Actually, this is, and we did write out with that.
You just asked me to do that, you want to do a day or night?
I think it could be right in the evening, I'd like to get off of work in the middle of the day before you're right by the, you can do it in the evening, assuming like 6:00, something to that measure, or even 7:00 if you want to go on Saturday morning, but I prefer to do it during the working.
The zoning is made up of community, business, and...
Come here, come here.
We hear both, yeah, hear both on the report.
In our code book, it does say our zoning board should have seven members and it should, there is rules and regulations on forming the board and we would need to have an attorney representative available after we start the process to make sure that we're on point with that process.
Okay, one other question, for CMAP, how soon are we looking to have our process start?
I asked, could we do our meeting by Zoom because we're still under the pandemic?
Oh, we're having...
And because of doing it by Zoom, we can meet upstairs in the office, make a convenient ST, our video play media person to come up, set it up so that everybody can sit at the table and be seen and it can be on the screen.
That's it.
Any questions? Have we been, people notified, media personnel so that they could set it up for the community days and trustees? And of course, maybe all this, everybody.
Yes.
You can leave now.
Thank you.
We have AHS and Treasurer, Mr. McCaskill?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, good evening, Board, Mayor, Clerk, residents of the Department Heads. A couple of things, we've been going back and forth with the comptroller about the 2017 audit. I have told the comptroller to talk directly to the auditor, the village has done everything we're supposed to do. The auditor has prepared the pool, the auditor has sent emails back and forth saying that they got to do some different uploads. One of the biggest issues that we had is because there has been such a huge gap in our auditing that our data and other login information has completely expired and went out of the system because as everyone knows, the last audit we had done was 2012. 2017 is done, the auditor has been about to give him a down payment for 2018, he does have the bank statements for 2018, there's going to be some auditing work, I mean, accounting work because as we all know, the accounting system has not been updated with all the invoices, the bills, et cetera, versus what's been sent out in the bank statement. We got a lot going on, right, but I think we're in a good position to move forward because if we get 2018 and 2019 done by December, I think everybody will be happy, especially Mr. Thompson, who's probably going after grants and things of that nature. That pretty much ends my report. I do have, Trustee Smith emailed me some questions about the bills and so we'll get to that portion unless you guys want me to talk about that now. She had four questions about the bills that she asked me, she emailed to me this, I guess like the last 30 minutes, saying she wouldn't make the meeting and for me to ask those questions in front of passing the bills. But that ain't part of the portion that you guys want me to get into that.
Next on the agenda, consent agenda. Next, approval of the minutes, I did send the minutes out, it's very short, but July 14th, especially July 19th. Any question of concern?
Looking for a motion to accept the minutes.
July 14th.
Executive Board?
For July 14th.
Meeting minutes, July 14th, 2022, looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
That's that, man.
Motion by Trustee McFadden, seconded by Trustee Angela Frank Mews, Trustee Angela Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Tyson and Trustee Smith, we have four yeas and two abs, motion here.
Looking for, who wants to answer this question?
You're ready.
You have a man?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept this special board meeting minutes, July 19th, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Trustee McFadden, seconded by Trustee Angela Frank Mews, Trustee Anthony Frank Mews, Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Tyson, Trustee Smith, four yeas and two abs. Next on the agenda is the bill list.
Okay, so, hello everyone, back again. Total bill list for as of July 27, 2022 is $31,628.22. That's $31,628.82. The, I told you guys in my report that Trustee Smith sent me an email asking a couple of things. So the first question she wants to know is, "Bills should not pay $35 for a speeding ticket on 83th and Ashland, well, drive a vehicle, this is part of the ticket, why would the village pay that, why would the village in that area?" The second was, there was a class taken by a former police, who loaned the village world class four and the future, when anyone takes any type of class, it must come up with the board approval. Why aren't we paying proofing for copies when we are supposed to own the copier while we paying nine cents for color copy and less than a penny for black and white copy? And it's my understanding that we have paid Michelle Goh, Bronken Barf, at least $25,000. What exactly has she done? We have these deeds to put into military so that we probably can't tell her.
Trust, I'm...
Just say, say what it is.
$31,628.82.
I...
So we looking for a motion to pass $31,628.82.
Motion by Mitch, seconded by, I have a question. Can you hear a second before you go to the court?
Second.
You hear a second?
Then we go to the portion.
You hear a second for discussion, that's not the answer.
Not second.
Second by Trustee Angela Frank Mews, discussion.
Trustee? Trustee, my question, the cleaning specialists, they keep coming up on our bill list, but we're not getting addresses for where they're picking these people up from. We need to have the addresses so we know who to go out, where to go out. And also, it seems, I'm not sure where this is located, but it seems like we're developing some kind of a pattern that makes me a little bit uneasy on these people dying, so, rent within the village. So I'd like to have names and addresses when they have to go out and pick up new bodies.
Well, I believe the one, I, you talk, I mean, it's just no name on it.
Okay, because I mean, I mean, we have the bill, you know, when they're sent, but there's no address.
No address, no name.
There's no address, no name, it's just a bill. We need to be more specific.
All right. Okay, okay, what I'll do is I'll have a chief to see if individual here ensures and we go, hold head over head and see if it turns, do they, do they...
Trustee Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? Trustee Smith? Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Bill list passed at amount of $31,628.82. Next on the agenda, we have special presentation, none tonight. Consider passing orders resolution as follow, none tonight. I did send all three or four resolutions to the board last week, we have committee meetings so they're not on the agenda, so they go on the agenda for the next meeting. Discussion, authorization to approve, discussion and possible final action regarding certain regulations regarding water system in the village. Also, it's going to add approval of all businesses that have PTB system, Mayor, you can speak about that, let them know what it is.
It's something that we found out, if the builders didn't have, then we should have it. The PTZ is a...
PTB, PTC?
That's what I said, the mask, probably, yes. Z, as in Z.
Oh, so it's a V on here, that's my bad.
Yeah. So what that does, it's a valve that regulates backflow and some of the businesses don't have it. So I ain't going by everywhere, you know, and all other communities that have it. We need to make sure that all our businesses have that on there. So what this is for, is for us to vote on and then the business got to come and check compliance with it happening because if, say for instance, and God forbid, somebody have a backflow getting into our system, it could contaminate. So we going to eliminate all that and we kind of, you know, found out once we start searching and looking around. So there's some, one of the things that I, that I know that's a good device that we need to have on there. It's basically, so, yes, Trustee?
This was suggested or for them to be compliant through our agents or was it just us?
Well, once we, once we found out they ain't have it, it was suggested by everybody, by everybody. You know, everybody that was involved with what's going on, you know, with our water issues. Again, they said that our places, some of the places is not recommended, but we going to get it recommended because we already, nothing, proofing going on with the water far as, you know, contamination and stuff like that. So we just going to make sure we have the guys going around, whether it's the superintendent, but the superintendent going to do is let water works do it because they want to handle all that and they'll go around to the different locations and make sure they have them, if they don't have them, they're going to make sure they have, give them the draft up the ladder, let them know that the board won't, they need to have these systems in place.
Mayor, before we take the motion on that, vote on that, we need to go back to the bill list. Treasurer? Treasurer? McCaskill? Well, we got this as a last minute emergency, the chlorine equipment repaired at the pumping station, they need to pass this as soon as possible for the chlorine at the pumping station from Hawkins, $8,458.25. It said, could you have, you were contacting Mike to have the skiers, have the permanent equipment repaired at the pumping station, please?
Well, it's a, you know, man, the bill...
It's just came in, it's just, it's an auto gas feeding system. So that means the bill list would be $40,087.72, we need the treasurer on the line.
$40,000 what?
$40,000, 087.07. This is a must for the chlorine.
The work that has not been done?
No. This just came in, yeah, they need to, yes.
I sent them a text message.
Okay, we just keep it going, I think I'll pay the extra motion same, please.
I'm, sorry, I have another question, no, in regards to the possible final action regarding certain regulations regarding water system in the village, is that all part of the PTZ or is that a separate item?
You know, it was a separate, it was a separate item, the one item, because the mayor talked about it the other day, you know, he said it was for when our water, when a lot dropped to a certain level that they would alert.
Scavengers, scavenge.
That's the way, this is scavengers.
So that's, that's very important.
Very important.
Yes.
That's very, very important that we pass that. We need it ASAP.
Okay, so we will alert, whoever is...
Yeah, yeah, whoever is scavenging to hit and alert, you know, to keep us, and not only that, it shuts the system off, shutting turbines off. We need to make sure them get shut off because turbines, they cost $130 and I think this system here costs us like $35,400 to have them install, have a scavenger system put in. And everybody have it, when they saw our system, it's like, uh, really? Have we got this big thing?
Yeah, so we would've nuked right away if they dropped.
Right, we would've, it would've alerted us, called us right away, it would've hit everybody and, you know, shut the turbines off. So this last time became pretty close to having an issue.
Okay, we got it.
So then we're calling another emergency at Tony's school. Should we just make a motion in the second place?
Okay, something for a motion, a motion to approve us with the PTZ valve. Are y'all, you separate or you, 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 both of them is under water and it's up to you all? Okay, something for a motion to pass the PTZ valve as well as the scavenger system.
I'll make the motion.
Motion was by Webster?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Muse, are we putting an amount on it here or just right there as just emergency?
Breakdown as an emergency to get him?
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Mews?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? Trustee Smith? Four yeas and two abs. This was put on by, is he on the line?
Who was it?
McCaskill?
I don't believe so.
Okay, this is a ratification of Dixmore senior trip. In order for the seniors to go on a trip, it was $1,280 and the water pool, $1,000.
So we're ratifying...
$280 and I know Mr. McFadden had a thing, it was an email, went out to all the board members, said, "Take it from another thing," but we can't do that, so she recommended that we just take, go for the $280.
You want to speak about it? From what I received on the, on the memo, it was that they want to take money from the children and give it to the seniors, I'm not for that. $280 would be given to 280 rather than take $500 from the seniors and give it to them.
Sounds good.
So the ratification will be $280 and senior trip, is this Saturday?
So looking for a motion to ratify the senior trip to add $280, looking for that motion.
Motion by Trustee Mitchell?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Webster, Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? And Trustee Smith? Do we have any citizens comment?
Um, no.
No citizens comment for the record, no citizen comment also for the record, nobody called in or sent an email out before time. No citizens comment for the record, no citizen comment, also for the record, nobody called in or sent an email out before it's out, which is the email. We do have a couple, um, announcements, uh, we got a flyer, but it's not completely done yet. I'm asking all board members, please come to one time and we can do a flyer, pictures, so everybody will be all here together. Um, to Mayor Roberts from Keith Freeman, dated July twenty-third, cleanup day. Dear Mayor Roberts, supervisor here would like to schedule a cleanup day in the town of Dixmore. Should we have exact team members to come out and assist at the event? Please tell us though, it would be something we can assist your village with, we have the date of August fourteenth available. Um, I guess we took one for today and, and the mayor, they were thinking about maybe the sticks would be better. It's up to the board on the fourteenth, Sunday, the staff is gonna come out, so we can figure it out tonight.
The date is the sixth on?
The sixth will be on the Saturday, it will be the day that they will be doing the.
It would be better because.
The, um, pop-up. The fourteenth is on the Sunday after the, uh.
They do the pop-up on the sixth?
Yes.
It's a system pop-up on the thirteenth.
The thirteenth, oh, food giveaway, during township's, we're gonna give away food on the sixth.
No.
No. I know, yeah, I got a pop-up on the thirteenth, but the township was giving away food on the sixth boxes because.
What time do you do that?
I know, they do a boxes on the sixth of August, you asked them what's this, that's Saturday, but is that too much with doing boxes and cleaning?
August is.
Or maybe should we wait to September?
Busy, yeah.
Ask them about September.
That'd be better for, for the cleanup, um, you have a custody? We got, we got the pop-up on the sixth. The thirteenth, we have the bags, food, and a pop-up. Food and a pop-up on the thirteenth, so I guess you're gonna do the food early in the morning, then go into the food bag, you know?
Right.
And I don't mean, we already kinda deep down.
Stretch.
Two days back to back.
Yeah, but let's still come in cohesive, let's do one picture together, because we do have a flyer, we're missing one trustee, so the flyer will look something like this. We just gotta add the trustee.
Do, what do you, are we gonna, uh, send a letter out to township about, uh, food bag, anything like that?
We did send a donation letter out to the state.
Okay.
Yes, we did, so we just waited, because I know she allocated a certain amount when we spoke to them, can they have it, right?
Yeah.
So, so on the sixth, it's supposed to be throwing township food giveaway boxes, I know the mayor asked you two hundred fifty boxes on the sixth of August. And that's supposed to be from ten to, ten, twelve, uh, twelve to two is up to the board members and the mayor decided. On the thirteenth, we're supposed to have a company come out for the pop-up and for the back to school. Ms. McFadden said, we're not gonna do this at ten, but we will have all those games out there for people to play, spin the top, pick up sticks, everything, so we're just gonna have a day of fun, yes.
Oh, um, Mr. McCaskill wants to elect you on the next round.
Okay, once we finish this. So I'm gonna talk to Mr. Freeman tomorrow and tell him that we gotta wait to September for the cleanup, September. We are approving for August sixth for the pop-up for the food giveaway for two hours. On the thirteenth, uh, tentative day for the back to schools that pop-up, uh, they got the back to school from twelve to four. And we're throwing all the games and everything on there too, so we're not finished with this. We are looking for donations, we are looking for volunteers.
On eight thirteen?
On eight thirteen for twelve to four. No, it's not done, this was just a road trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Yes.
Uh, I didn't have.
Don't forget about the trip this weekend to the casino. Oh, I do have one thing, we do all need to get together and find a date to go to the zoo.
Yes, yes, yes.
Friday's school.
Friday's school, it's twenty-four, the school going back, maybe it's Sunday?
Sunday?
School is gonna be starting soon, so we really, and I mean, our Saturday is our book, we got the sixteenth book. I mean, six is booked on the Saturday, we got the thirteenth book, I don't know who all went to Hubert's invitation, they invited us on, that's the twentieth. So we need to decide what day we want to go.
Okay, let's get together, uh, because basically all we gotta do, is, is, is for the kids, it's for anybody, kids anybody. And we got to, uh, to go figure out a date right quick, uh, we got tickets. Thank Commissioner Sam, she, uh, gave us tickets, so we got a lot of tickets.
When we go get the news letters, our take, have it in the newsletting, probably will happen.
Newsletting started, the newsletting is not, and so now we got new news. New news.
Also, as we can grab with all this.
Well, we, well, we just have two letters going out at the same time, that's how we do it.
Also, in all these, um, emails, flyers, on social media, we need to speak to Lee, Lee, are you still on the line?
Yes.
Chief Long?
He's still with it, my cat.
As I'm looking at Facebook and all the flyers, they have August second is a night out for the policemen. I think the village of Dixmore, I know it's a short notice, we should try to bring out our popcorn machine, our, um, snow cone machine, and let's do something, we don't have. We don't have to.
No, this is McCaskill's.
But we do, uh, we, we do need to do something, even if we can just sit down.
We can do something, that's, that's cool.
So chief, can you please set that up for August second for us?
August second, yeah.
It's a night out, all the communities are doing a night out.
Is that Monday or Tuesday?
Night out with the, uh.
Policeman.
With the police, national night out with the police.
And Pete, I wonder, you gonna be busy trying to run more places.
Add your jersey shirt and your police dog and everything.
Civil police.
You think we can even have, what are we gonna do?
I'm not sure what they got going on, I'll find out.
Uh, yeah.
Well, I, well, I'm saying, no, no, when you say they don't know, yes, they do know, because I have a Facebook stumble. To be honest with you, everything that's going on in the village of Dixmore, any events, is on the Facebook stumble page, so I'm not a mobile home knows. Yeah, if you go on the site, everything that we do here, trust me, is on Facebook. Every, every video, I'm gonna tell you where, yeah, I'm gonna tell you where it go, because I'm gonna tell you, they had three hundred reviews. But why don't people show up?
Oh, you put it there for them.
It's on there, but you can get it on one.
Uh, next on the agenda clerk.
Show your name.
Next on the agenda clerk.
We got, um, McCaskill. We gotta go.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so what, what we, what's going on, we, we, uh. Okay, okay, so we need a man, the, uh, bill list, uh, we need to add eight thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cent to the bill list due to the, uh, for the, uh, chlorine injector pumps.
Okay.
And that would be?
That's fine, okay, I can add.
Okay, and that, that, that's gonna bring the bills up to what, what you have trustee?
Forty thousand, four zero, zero eight seven oh seven.
You hear that?
Okay, I got it.
Oh, okay, alright. So, uh, excuse me, clerk, so, so, so the trustees need to vote on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, trustees, so we, we, we amended the gender, the bill list, uh, to the amount of.
To add eight thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cent for the bill list to be a total of forty thousand, seventy-eight dollars, I think sixty-two cent. But what you know, what you, forty, forty thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seven cent. So four oh, zero eight seven, point oh seven.
Looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion was by trustee McFadden?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Frankmuir, trustee Frankmuir?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Tyson and trustee Smith is absent, the new bill is forty thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seven cent.
Okay, so it take us back down.
Clerk, 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 is that, is that the, uh, email you poured to me?
About Hawkins for the chlorine?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, for the chlorine.
Okay, so, it take us back down to announcement, you do your announcement clerk?
I just wanna thank all the board members and everybody and all, oh, okay, now, I.
No, no, all, all, all of us work together, no, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. We're gonna let the mayor, we're gonna let the mayor, cause you know, I facilitate this meeting, so we're gonna let the mayor.
No, no, but, uh, you know, I, I, I would like to thank everyone that's involved with, uh, with the water issue this time, once again. I really wanna thank my trustees, you guys are really super, you know, without.
Really?
And my clerk, and my assistant, assistant wasn't here. Well, my clerk and assistant, cause she didn't have the two shoes that time. Also, uh, all the employees, Mr. Mewes, uh, uh, Pete came by a couple times when I was out there, somewhere around there. Uh, Mr. Darden, I, I, I just like to thank everyone, uh, for what you all have done in helping, the attorney came, but we were closed at the time, but he'll be pushing water around inside the garage. But everybody that, uh, blended in, I re, I really thank all of you, I forgot someone, I'm sorry about it, uh, the workers really hung out there, we took water over to Mariner, we still doing it, uh, so even, uh, Fred was out there running around, getting in my way. But, uh, also the chief, the chief was doing this thing, so everybody put in as a family, and I, I really appreciate that. I just thank God for all you all, so you all always filling in what you need.
We take, we had to donate the water, we had to.
Everybody donated, yeah, uh, the township, I would like to thank, uh, the township Tiffany. Uh, she really helped out and sent pallets and pallets and pallets of water, the county came in and they sent water. So we had water coming from everywhere. So the people shouldn't have no complaints, but although, you know, you still have some that's gonna complain. No matter how good the water, getting it, how good we choose, we still gonna ask somebody to complain, but we pray for them and keep going, that's it.
We got a lot of people came today.
Yeah? Uh, pardon. But, uh, we have been taking off water, uh, I was over at Mariner giving out some water again today, but of course, if they, if Mariner need water, we can, uh, you know, get them some more. Uh, everyone else been taking off water, off that one section, so we dealing with that now.
Mayor, they did call, yes, but they did call today at two o'clock, said they had another leak, and they was requesting water, we ought to repair it.
Yeah, they, they still over there with it. So, uh, the water is on for them right now, where they can shower and, you know, uh, use to come over, so.
Could you please speak on one other thing there about, we did get a lot of complaints about we are building the residents in the mobile park, a bill for their water, and we kept trying to explain to them?
No, we, we, we do not build the residents in the mobile park, that's the owner of the mobile park that's gonna be building. Uh, we have one meter that goes over there, the village is not building the residence. We build the park, our own, not individual trails, so please don't think that. We have one meter going over there, and another thing I'm gonna speak on is that, first thing they went to Harley, the village got the two million dollars. Same on you, uh, the village did not receive the two million dollars. We was approved for two million dollars, when that's coming, I don't know. I would like to know so we can take care of what we need to take care of, but as, uh, Mr. John Thompson said, is that the, uh, army corps engineers, they start the work, that's when the money come, and that's when we start replacing the pipes over there. So, for a matter of record, all I have right now is a plastic check that says two million dollars on it. We did not receive two million dollars, thank you. Get them on.
Next is closed session, uh, Attorney Wassily, do you have a report tonight?
Um, I called all the trustees except for trustee Mitchell I can catch up with about the things that I wanted to talk about in closed session. Um, so I, we can go into closed session and talk about them some more, but I think I touched base with everybody who's at the meeting, and I reached out to trustee Tyson as well, so if we wanna get out, I can call trustee Mitchell after the meeting. If we wanna talk about these matters further, all of which need to come back, we can go into closed session.
Do we need a vote tonight?
We don't need to vote tonight, I don't have settlement agreements on either side, I need settlement agreement on both of those matters that I talked everyone about, to be able to go to a vote, I just wanna make sure everybody lives in the loop and know that myself, the mayor, and Mr. McCaskill are working on these issues, and they'll be coming back to yours.
Okay, so, so closed session at the next meeting?
Closed session at the next meeting for sure.
Okay, thank you, no approval, I was discussing closed session, we don't have any tonight, next on the agenda is German.
Looking for a motion, who, Jerry?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by trustee McFadden?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Andrew Frankmuir, trustee Andrew Frankmuir?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee Tyson and trustee Janita Smith, and the time of journey is six fifty-three P M.